This is an interesting topic and it's very much part of what I do. And I just wanted to share two books that have really helped in my work department group. One book is entitled, "We Can't Talk About This at Work," by Mary Francis. And the second book, which really defines work groups and getting to that next level of trust, is a book by Amy Edmondson and it's called Psychological Safety as a baseline of working towards understanding each other. So I just really wanted, as we start and listen to each other, I think these are some, we're in some trying times and the more education we can get as people, I just really think it resonates with my neighbors.
Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Ms. Kunkel?
I just wanted to share that over the weekend Iowa Future First Lego League, I should say, headed state competition at Iowa State University College of Engineering. And I think, just looking at some of the students that participate in this event, I thought Pleasant Valley was probably well represented there. And I just wanted to congratulate all the students that worked hard this year, that had some obstacles in completing their projects, but there's a lot of dynamic robots and they worked hard to program their missions. And also, they completed projects that included prototypes for exploring future transportation needs and I just thought that was great. This was on the Facebook page for Pleasant Valley, but I just wanted also to congratulate the Pleasant Valley High School First Tech Challenge Team. Everything That's Radical is their name. They had an excellent showing at their qualifying matches and I wanted to wish them good luck on February 5th at the Super Regionals.
Great, thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Cambershaw?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Zimmer?
I do have some things tonight. First of all, I want to acknowledge instructor, Ms. Rita Brown is here tonight, and I wanted to just share with you that you always get a little nervous when you have a changing of the guard from one teaching position to another, are they going to continue the initiative and the good work from the teacher before them? And so, last year at this time, before this board, I had announced that seven students in the personal finance class had taken the UNI Personal Finance exam, of which they can earn three hours' college credit if they passed the exam. And at that time, five passed. Then again, I came to this body and extolled the virtues of the spring group that took the test, and it was 14 students that took the test and 10 passed. Well, then we had a changing of teachers from Ms. Murphy to Ms. Brown, and this fall we had 17 students that took the test and 12 passed to earn three hours' college credit. So again, I wanted to give congratulations to Ms. Brown and to the students on the good work there. Also, this past weekend Director Christina Myatt had 13 students compete in the regional individual speech contest with nine students receiving a Division One and four Division Two. And the nine Division One will proceed on to the state competition in February. Also, finally, after a long time working at this, we had our two first CNC machinist registered apprentices announced and presented at Arconic last, well, on Thursday, January 13th. And that has elicited some interest from Leclerc Manufacturing and all that have talked about, hey, we're interested in this. Boyd Manufacturing Machining is interested. So we have three other students, juniors, that will be ready for new employers to interview to continue on this very, very important path. And we're also working on our own registered welding. And then I'm also working on automotive and I'm working on culinary. So, some very exciting things there. And then lastly, I got an email message. Sometimes you never know for sure when you write recommendation letters for students on all kinds of different awards. Sometimes they let you know if they get them or not. But Mr. Erickson and myself wrote a recommendation letter for Erica Holmberg for the CIBA Major Lander Scholarship. This is a big, this is a big honor. And her father emailed and said she was selected. And so she will be representing the CIBA, the Southeast Iowa Bandmasters, Major Landers representative at the state level. So, same things.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Zimmer, is that it?
That's it.
That's a lot, okay. All right. Mr. Pennington?
I have nothing.
Ms. Damon?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Struce?
I do, I have, always a sad day but an exciting day for certain individuals. We have five individuals who are retiring from Pleasant Valley at the end of this school year, equating to 122 years of service in these five individuals that were announced last week. I'll start with Jackie Dwyer. Jackie Dwyer's been an educational aide at Riverdale Heights for the past 20 years and she'll be retiring here at the end of the year. Mary Acker has been at Pleasant Valley High School for 15 years. If you recall, she was in our nurse's office for a long time, went to our guidance office here a few years back. Liza Peters is an ESL teacher who's been with us for eight years. She'd been previously teaching in California before coming to Pleasant Valley. And then Tara Citrick, 43 years at Bridgeview Elementary, will be retiring here at the end of the year. And also, Mike Duncan, in the audience today. Long career, started Edison Academy, high school, junior high, but after 36 years, he retired. So congratulations, Mike, and congratulations to all five of those individuals for all the years that they've given to the students of Pleasant Valley. Very exciting and thank you.
Okay. Well, next we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $180,425.95 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $90,667.46 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $913.48 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Cambershaw, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $21,974.50 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pepple Fund.
I move the Pepple Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $16,781.84 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Hoskins, that the Pepple Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6328 through 6331 be issued in a total amount of $58,254.60 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Cambershaw, second by Ms. Brockman, that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6328 through 6331 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Trust Fund.
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $2,530.5 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now moving on to old business. We are going to do the third and final reading of Board Policy Series 100. Mr. Struce?
So the third and final reading, as Dr. Wugley just mentioned, going through no real changes. Director Cambershaw did notice on page 25 that we had left out the word service or train service animals. So we put the word trained in there, so that just made it flow better. And then Dr. or Director Cambershaw also brought the idea of, in our policies, a lot of the times we, in the discrimination, for example, we might list the person to contact being Mr. Zimmer. And a lot of times, you always make sure you are very careful if someone changes a position, that you get those things changed. So we'll note that we've talked about that before. We think we'll keep the name in there for now, but in the future, potentially, we could make a change where it just says the position, contact this phone number, just so you don't miss it, but we'll keep it in there for now. But otherwise, everything else is exactly the same as we've had the last two board meetings, just a final approval and we'll put those in place.
Does anybody have any other questions on the policies? Okay, and I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the additions and revisions to Board Policy Series 100 as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Cambershaw, that the board approved the additions and revisions to Board Policy Series 100 as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Cambershaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. Okay, now moving on to new business. We are going to first start with the Pleasant View Drive modifications. Mr. Struce?
So over the last few years, we've had on our policy, look at changing the front drive of Pleasant View along with the resurfacing of the parking lot. Due to the parking issues that we've had, we've gone through and looked at resurfacing and making a new side, kind of a thorough way off the side for more cars to stack available to us. So tonight, we have Bob Drohowski from IMEG is going to go through the plans with all of us to kind of see what this looks like. He'll also provide the timeline of where we will start taking this to bid. And then he'll actually walk through what the design looks like, so you can see that as we look at moving forward. So it's twofold. It's one, resurfacing, but also adding stacking line to help get the cars off of Crow Creek as we've discussed before. So, Bob, I'll leave it to you to begin and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Sure, if you want to start on the overall layout sheet of the project and maybe then the next. Yeah, if you want to, let's zoom in, let's zoom in down by the entrance on Crow Creek, just kind of the overall, so we can talk to see some details. If we, please zoom in down by the ancient Crow Creek there, that might help out a little bit. So, as Mr. Struce indicated, you know, the goals of this project are twofold. One, to replace the existing failing pavement along the length of the access drive to the school, as well as create some additional lane stacking to keep traffic from backing up on Crow Creek Road. We're proposing a full-depth asphalt replacement of the access drive utilizing the existing sub-based stone beneath. So you'd be looking at kind of a, especially given the linear nature of the road, you know, it's almost like a roadway replacement project. You'd see from, you know, where we'll mill and remove the top five inches of asphalt and put down new in place. Right now, with the project, or with the existing conditions, you know, we can, we can stack approximately 45, 46 cars from the location of drop-off. If you want to zoom up to the, sorry, a little closer to the school there. From the location of drop-off all the way back to Crow Creek Road. So as part of this project, we'll be looking at, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to get out here and start pointing. Reutilize some of the existing surface from the drive to extend our lanes, and then also adding a 12-foot wide lane, approximately 400 feet long on the east, or on the south side of the drive. So, what this is going to allow us to do is add another 425 feet of stacking length. I think somewhere around 19 additional cars. We'd be looking at a 30% increase in the amount of vehicles to be able to stack on-site. We would have two lanes of stacking all the way up to the, to the back of the rail there. That would be our, kind of the start of that pickup-drop-off zone. So you're also going to have vehicles stacked along the curb for that initial pickup. In the parking lot space itself, be doing a two-inch little overlay, so replacing about half the pavement. It's not in as tough a shape as the access drive, so kind of a stewardship of some dollars there. And we'll be looking to replace the current storms who are inlets, just the inlets themselves, as well as providing a full-depth patch at those locations. That's where you got a lot of that water sitting this time of year, you get all that freeze thaw, that's what starts popping on our pavement. So, increasing some of the drainage there as well as replacing that pavement. You know, with the resurfacing, we'll be doing new pavement markings to help guide those vehicles, maybe hopefully a little more efficiently, to try to utilize a little more than 30 car, 30% more cars, get them through a little faster as well. As far as project schedule, we are looking at getting the documents posted on the online plan room starting Wednesday, January 26th. Posting a pre-bid meeting with contractors interested in bidding on Wednesday, February 2nd. With bids being due Thursday, February 10th. This is approximately a 16-day bid window. We would then be looking to have a public hearing on the project along with vocal board approval from the current local contractor on Monday, February 14th.
Bob, do you want to go through the budget now, or do you want to take questions first?
Yeah, we can touch on the budget. Current cost estimate, looking between 360 to, you know, with contingencies, around 425,000. Given the, you know, the fluctuation of cost of materials, you know, these have been, been a challenging time to try and nail down budgets. One thing we always run into in these areas are the soft subgrades. We have a separate subgrade repair contingency on this project. Now, we are being able to be utilizing the existing base stone of the driveway. There's a lower probability of getting into that than if we were to take it all the way down to dirt and have to regrade. So, I do think it's important to keep that in there, keep that in the back of our minds. But, you know, anywhere between that perceived 370 and 425 with contingency.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one. So, just to refresh my memory, so is it just two lanes in and out of Pleasant View right now? Or like two and a half lanes?
So, we've got, it's two lanes in, one lane out.
Okay. So what does that do to the softball?
What's that?
Is it one lane in, two lanes out?
Um, we've got...
No, on a left and a right turn.
It stacks coming in and then when you drive, you can have a drive-through lane all the way where the buses would go down the middle. And then when we leave, there's one lane that comes out.
Yes, you've got one out, two in.
Yep.
So this outside lane along the sidewalk that we'll be keeping, that's kind of our, that's our stacking lane. And then you can see where we've offset an additional 400-foot lane there to the south. So this, it maintains the existing traffic pattern on-site, just adds additional stacking lane.
So it is widening it?
It is.
So what does that do to the softball field right there at the entrance? Does it do anything? It's further down?
Oh, no, no. In this location...
It's not widening, it's not making...
In this location up here, we're just matching exactly.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
So that include the grade, so the grade going up the hill still going to be the same?
Yeah, everything would maintain existing.
So with the current parking lot, how many cars can actually fit from Crow Creek all the way through to pickup?
Forty-six, depending on how efficient we are at pulling all the way up.
Okay. And what is this new?
Sure.
And what is the new plan accommodate?
Using kind of the same, same numbers for how we divide that up, 65 cars, so we'd see a 19-vehicle increase.
Okay. And with the current, I had a parent ask about lighting. Are we adding any additional lighting?
We are not.
On the driveway at all?
Yes.
Okay. They were concerned that it does get quite dark in the evenings, and so they did ask about the lighting.
Okay. One thing that is not great about the project, that we will have to make sure we address those, we have all those big trees in the drive when you come in there. Those will be removed because of this, now that we like to remove trees. But also, the roots of the trees are also causing problems right now on the drive coming in. So, as much as we don't want to do it, we're going to have to do it. And we've talked about doing, planting additional trees in that area that grow, because it's, I mean, it's beautiful when you drive in and you have all the overarching trees, but they're just going to start dying here pretty soon anyway. And if we were to go in there and try to leave them, we'd disrupt the roots too mad, that would cause issues. So they'll be coming out.
So, when there's events, big events like winter program, often folks will park out on the fields. When I looked at the map, it looked like there wouldn't be any change to that, right?
Correct. That all stays the same. Yep. It's really, when you come in, you can kind of see the dark area, that's all current. When you go straight, that's where the parking picks up again and takes you to the front of the school. So all that grass area will still, the soccer field is or the field area, that's all untouched.
Will anything be done with the area in the front? Will that be repaved or not?
Are we talking, when you say in front?
If you were to go straight instead of go right, yeah?
No, no. So the limits of the project kind of cut off where we have the darker hatch.
And that area, that pavement's fine and there's no issues?
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, so, in the documents, we are asking, or stipulated the contractor, you know, in terms of access, we've got one point of access, kind of this narrow, narrow road. So the contractor will be required to maintain 20-foot paved lane, continuous paved lane throughout the life of the project, just to, you know, one, maintain day-to-day function of the school building in the summertime, though, and that is, you know, almost just as busy in the summer as during the school year. But two, emergency access is the big, big driver there. So your typical emergency access lane is going to be a minimum of 20 feet wide, so that, that's the guidance we're giving them for this project.
The project has to be done regardless. So really what we're looking at is this additional lane, so the expenditure's $35,000 for the lane. Did I break that out right?
Very close.
The project has to be done regardless. And we're just trying to take advantage of having a contractor.
Right.
Is that the additional pull-off lane?
The additional pull-off lane would be the sum of all those, so 40, 56.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, no, that's fair.
I was just trying to pull that piece out, that it's a big number with all this.
It is, it is.
And it's necessary.
How many cars are typically stacked on Crow Creek right now? Is it about 19 or is it 18?
I'm glad you asked that question. I was waiting for the opportunity. Because I'm sitting here sweating at the moment, because I don't want to have this where you go through all this and then you're right back up here, because Fred's been down there, bless his heart, from the freezing, coming down there and watching this. And when the weather is beautiful, the number of people driving is down, we got a lot of walk going on. But by God, as soon as that weather changed and it turned, right now, we'll count anywhere on Baptist Church, we'll have anywhere from 12 to 25 cars lined up all the way around there. There's been a couple times where I've almost had to go down and I've got to stand by where I pull and get more in. Fred comes up and will tell me that, hey, just want to let you know down in Shatterbrook there's 16 cars, or 17, or whatever it is. So I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm counting this and I'm going, okay, this helps. I'm not going to, no question about it. But if kids don't start taking the bus, we cannot sit there and put stacking lane for every single family going up there. So two things are also going to have to be added to this, if you want this to be such that we don't have to have two people down there monitoring this every day. One is, there has to be a no parking sign down towards the entrance, because you cannot park cars all the way to Crow Creek Road, because the incoming buses cannot make that swing. Those cars will have yellow going all the way down the side of them. And we've got it laid out exactly where that cutoff has to be. And it's more like the end of the big block wall, that you can't park any further than that. And then the other thing, it's going to have to be approaching the city of Bettendorf, there has to be no parking signs on Crow Creek Road to stop this, which then is going to put, anybody that doesn't fit on this, they can't park on Crow Creek. I don't, I mean, I don't know.
And where are we at at Pleasant View as far as growth? Are we at kind of our max rule B, or is there a potential that we will grow and have more families than we currently do?
You know, ebb and flow. I mean, we're a four-section building, we're full, I mean, and we're not full in every single classroom, but that always comes up and down. But we're basically a full building at, with 675 kids in a four-section building and the special programs that are in there. So you're always going to be within that number. So you're always going to see kind of what we're talking about here today in that process.
Are more students getting more comfortable riding the bus, or is bus ridership down?
I don't have a good answer for that one. I really don't. I just don't.
Yeah. And they'll be zipper merged into one lane. So, there won't be, children will not be going across two lanes of traffic to get in cars, but the kids will only enter on the one lane.
So Catherine, you drive in there right now and you look at where the sidewalk is around the outside, that'll still be the pickup lanes of all the kids. There's no kids going across any traffic or in front of any cars. Yep, those zipper merge in before that. Yep.
Is there, have you thought, is there any other proposal that would accommodate more cars?
Without significant increase in costs to create more onsite stacking, no. This is, this would likely be the most budget appropriate.
Because if you're, if you're expanding one lane over, if you expand it to, it's significantly more?
You start, you start adding, you start adding an additional lane, we're already, now we're asking two cars already to combine, now we're going to ask three to combine. So you start to lose that efficiency that you've now gained by putting, you know, 12 more cars on site. So we're going to, we're going to slow down how fast we're going to get through the line and that additional cost, you know, is kind of, kind of on the door on a loss of efficiency there. There's almost dead money spent.
Like I think of Riverdale Heights, when you fixed the drive there several years ago, just the ability that that one turn lane just helped so much too, and we just don't have that, because this drive is just narrow and there's nowhere to go.
You know, so if you were to drive down Riverdale Heights at 8:20 in the morning, I mean, there are cars backed up at the stoplight on Devil's Glen. The difference is, you have four lanes, so one lane is just backed up cars to a stoplight, everyone else is going by on the right-hand side. Or the buses are in the one lane and, I mean, it's just, they just back up there, but they can handle it. Crow Creek being a two-lane road, it's just difficult, because you're passing cars.
And just the way this is long, narrow, there's just nowhere to go. Ride the bus. Where's the parking lot? I know cars do park in that parking lot there. Is there, there's so much field space. Is there any potential to get rid of that as a parking lot and move the cars to park and use all that space instead of having cars parked there? I mean, that's why it has to be one lane, right, going through that intersection because of the parking lot that's utilized there.
To the...
Yeah, cars aren't parked along there, which is why it has to be one lane around. If we could have cars parked in all this field space that isn't being used, we could have two lanes going all the way around and not have to create an extra round.
You could extend the drop-off around, but currently with the vehicles in there, there's a, you know, a safety issue with backing up traffic, or backing up cars into that space.
Right. I mean, is that, I know it's extra cost, but is that something that was considered? Having more parking lot space out into that field, eliminating that as a parking lot?
Given the budget constraints, it was not, it would be considerably more expensive if we were to pave something up there.
And you think that's the only green space we have? So when you go out there for PE class, when kids, you have multiple classes out there, they're all doing things in that space, you're going to turn it into a parking lot space.
Yeah, not the whole thing, but I mean, that's, I mean, that's probably the most green space for any school in the district, I would think. I mean, there's a lot out there in that baseball field. There's just a lot of space. I was just trying to find a way, because yes, it, we definitely need to do it, but but it's a significant amount of money to maybe not be a complete solution to our problem. So that's, but, you know, we have to stick within budget too. So just trying to help with the brainstorming.
Are there any opportunities to release certain grades earlier or late? I mean, I know what comes into play is you have siblings that one's in sixth grade and one's in, you know, kindergarten and trying to, I don't know if there's just any opportunity to get, I guess, maybe a longer release time that would allow.
Maybe we could look at that and see.
Some cars in and out quicker than, you know, knowing this, they're going to be out 15 minutes earlier and.
I don't know, I mean, you can drive by the high school and it's a 2:45 dismissal and you got cars starting to park there at 2:10 in the afternoon.
It's usually the same people.
Right. I mean, it's just, I, people just arrive early and wait. But it's just, there's a lot of drivers.
With the suggestions that Mr. Zimmer made regarding the no parking signs and on Crow Creek and not having people park, like he mentioned, you think that, how much improvement you think that will make in this, in the situation?
I think any signage and field markings can help with self-monitoring versus us having to enforce behavior instead of trying to create learned behavior. So.
They would just have to circle around until they could actually pull in?
They're going to end up on Shadow Brook. I don't know what else to tell you. I'm just walking, just reporting back from the field exactly what I see every day, especially as the weather's that cold or it rains or something like that.
So are we, does anybody else have any questions?
Wait a minute.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I understood right. You're seeing on your numbers that you now can handle about 65 cars. Correct. Okay. At 2:55 today, there were 56 cars in line from up there on Crow Creek. There were two cars parked to pick up kids in the parking lot area. Apparently, there were a couple empties, so parents went in there and waited for the kids. On the grass were five. And then something new I saw today, Mike, is there were like eight cars headed over to the north entrance where I thought the only buses were picking up kids. And I think now some parents have said, come out the other door, I'll pick you up over there. That meant that there were 71 cars today on site. At 3:05, I went down to Shadow Brook, there were 18 at that time. I had counted as many as 20, 20 to 22 down there in other, I've been up there a few times. And at 3:10 today, off-site, there were, let's see, have the church. There were 18 cars. And we've seen, as Mike said, as many as 22 to 25 there. So all together today, there were 107 cars waiting to pick up kids. And you're talking about 65. So I kind of wonder if costs is worth it at this point, how we do a proper study. The other thing that I had noted with Mr. Clarkson last week, this area up here is a play area during the day. That area is vacant when kids are getting out. That is almost, well, I think it's as large as the parking area at Baptist Church. I think it would hold about 20 to 22 cars. If you program it right and make a circle and you have to have people out there directing the kids so that you don't have a safety issue. Yeah, I don't know. That's my numbers today.
Yes?
I just, we do have a need to have some cars being able to enter for meetings. The eight cars we saw today are twelve of the best high school leaders that come down and tutor at kids every day. So they're the ones that are coming in on that middle lane with the buses and looking for parking. And they're coming to get their service hours done. And they carpool because they're so parking. So, and they also have, you know, IP meetings and parent meetings that typically are free and free distance. So there is some need for people to be able to use that middle lane because they cannot wait, I mean, they can't wait in the car pickup lane to get in there for some activities that they're doing at the school.
Does the cost estimate forecast the labor material based on when the project's going to be done? Or is it the current rates that the estimate's based on?
It's using some of the current costs that we've seen coming in on projects that we've been bidding right now. So obviously, the largest, you know, material use on this project is asphalt. And that directly correlates with the oil prices. So, you know, best data we have available is what we've got for that cost estimate.
So how much do you think that's going to go up? That's the real question, right? I mean, you've been doing projects presumably for the last year. How much have they grown month by month or quarter by quarter?
Yeah, you know, it.
And I know it's a guess.
Yeah, it, we haven't seen the costs of those types of materials go up as much. Structural steel is the big one. You know, it seems to double, double all the time. And, you know, asphalt's still, and still stay on relatively competitive for the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Klinge Smith, do you happen to know, like, with this budget here? And, I mean, was this forecasted or how is this going to get paid for?
It's on our five-year capital projects plan, but I believe we'd have to rearrange some things.
We originally put on there, I don't have a number in front of me, but 300-something was originally designed. 350,000, I think, was originally designed for this project. We have a Bridgeview parking lot that we were looking at also redoing that we are going to put on hold right now. So for a five-year capital projects, we will use those funds to help offset this addition that we're looking at here.
Joey, did you have a question?
So just to clarify the cost, if we did nothing to try to increase the stacking ability, like we weren't doing that extra lane, we'd be doing the project anyway to the tune of 275,000 or whatever?
Yeah, it'd be upper 2s before the mission.
Okay. And we'd have to do that anyway?
Correct. It was on our plan to get that done this year anyway. Yes. And then with the traffic issues, we just looked at what could we do? As we visited with Fred Dodds, we looked at it together and said, what can we do?
Okay.
So if we ended up doing this, depending upon if there was still an issue, would we also be using the Baptist parking lot as well?
The goal is hopefully not to have to.
Right.
I mean, you can't predict necessarily what's going to transpire there. How tight can you get the cars? I mean, it's close. It's, that's kind of that number we're looking at was 20-ish and, I don't know.
And of course, in the summer, it's fine. And when it's nice, it's okay. It's just during these winter months.
That's going to get you to about, oh, I don't know. Depends on when the snow starts flying, Thanksgiving, thereabouts.
And we can try and petition the city also to expand Crow Creek to four lanes as well. That would be nice. Yeah. So we could work on our city officials there too.
Hey, can you expand the road going out to the junior high? Let's.
That's Leclerc, though. That's Leclerc.
The question you looked at, when we talked to the city earlier and talked to the police department, they struggled with this at most schools across Bettendorf and Pleasant Valley Schools. It was happening at Leclerc, at Cody and Bridgeview and trying to solve those issues. It's just people drive their kids to school. If they put them on a bus, we don't have all these issues. But yeah, that's the bottom line. People are just bringing their kids to school. I.
So do we, I think, maybe Jody asked this question, I'll ask it in case I missed it. Do we know why they're riding in cars instead of buses? And what can we do right to offset those questions? I think that's maybe, then we could proceed in a sense with this and a little more comfort that it may actually address the issue if we can cause a shift. But without knowing what the cause of that is directly.
Well, I think there's lots of weather concerns. Even on nice weather, if it's a rainy day and you have more people driving and those days, they don't want to be standing at the bus stop.
I mean, you drive out to junior high in the morning and you can sit back on that bridge way back because people are waiting to bring their kids. When you think, okay, how long are they willing to sit in a line for versus having on a bus? I don't, I don't know. I don't know how to solve that question. I mean, we hope people would have ride a bus, but to bring the kids.
Yes.
I was going to say, it's not just bussers that are being dropped off, it's walkers too. Kids that are well within the walking lanes. We noticed at Riverdale, they sit in traffic almost from their house to get dropped off.
I have one more thing, and I, I remember that also. I think that there's, and please understand that I'm not blaming parents at all in any way, shape, or form. But if not everyone follows the rules in terms of pickup, it makes the pickup time a lot longer. I do pick up every single day at Riverdale Heights. And if the drop-off in the morning is relatively smooth, pickup should be very similar if kids are ready to go to get into their cars and they're watching for their parents. And so, and, and all cars are following the same exact rules of going all the way up here for kids getting their cars. So this is, I think that there's a lot of different.
Parents definitely play a role. I think it should be a class before your kids come into kindergarten. You have to pass the test and the drop-off.
I would say from doing Mr. Riverdale Heights every day, it's about February where we finally feel like we get all parents and all pickup adults conditioned to pull all the way up, wait for your kid, not get out of your car, roll down your window or hold up the sign. I mean, Riverdale, we've implemented where they write their kid's names on the sign and then we can yell before they even stop to get kids in the car. So maybe it's more of systematically, how can we help get cars through faster in order for it to not take as long to get kids in cars? And then it wouldn't stack up for, it wouldn't be stacked up for as long. It would start stacked up probably, but it would be stacked up for as long.
So it sounds like we have a plan of the bidding and everything. And so this was on our five-year plan. We're going to do some modifications to try and improve the situation. And so if people, if the board is, is ready to move on this project, then I will take a motion.
Can I just ask one question? If we vote yes, we're voting for this plan currently, we're not going to go back and try to look at other options to address some of the issues that were brought up.
I mean, some of the things we've talked about, give you an example. That playground area, you know, it's not surface designed for cars to be driving on a daily basis. If you use that parking lot off the side or look at trying to find ways to put more kids in there, again, you could be crossing traffic and element your kids crossing traffic in front of cars. I mean, it's just a tight area to try to figure out what's the best way when it's a one-way in and a one-way out. And maybe in the future, there's differences. I, I don't know.
So maybe with this modification and then maybe some better communication on what, why riding the bus might be a better option, might be able to help alleviate some of the issues.
Isn't that idea about putting the kid's name on the window, that's really smart? Because then the teachers.
Our savior.
So. Can, does somebody want to make a motion?
I move the board to approve IMEAG putting out the bid for the Pleasant View parking lot project.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve IMEAG putting out for bid the Pleasant View parking lot project. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the Board of Education 2022-2023 Board Meeting Calendar. Mr. Struce?
So nothing on this, great to look at the calendar dates. It's still the first and, sorry, second and fourth Mondays of the month. There are some where we will have the first starting at 5:30 versus the sixth due to concerts. And you'd see that'd be December 9th, February 13th, and April 24th. The rest will be all six o'clock starts. We would still continue on with our tradition of having one in July and one in March. Board meeting versus two in that month.
And one in December.
Thank you, and one in December. As we get close to those dates, if something were to come, we can always change at that time. But at least sets the yearly calendar in front of us for the upcoming dates.
Does that seem to be okay? It really hasn't changed much from previous years. Do we decide the December date today or can we wait on that?
So the question behind December really comes down to what you guys would prefer. It'd be December 5th or, well, typically it'd be the 12th is when we'd have it. When you look at December, we had on the 12th, but based upon the needs of all of you, the 12th is a choir concert. And I think the fifth was the band concert. So both nights are going to have a conflict. We'll start them at 5:30 on either one of those nights. It really comes down to maybe as a personal preference, if we prefer the fifth or the 12th. Mike is able to do it from a financial standpoint, either one, so that's not an issue. It just depends on maybe where your kids are next year in terms of band or choir.
Molly, you won't, you won't have choir next year, right? And were you the only choir?
No, I wasn't.
And it is for our. We can have three for that.
So.
So choir for you? Mine will be a vault, so.
And Jody, you have band?
I have band.
And Catherine?
I likely will have both.
Is 19th coming too close to Christmas?
Too.
The 19th of December? Have to look and see on that one there.
It's equidistant, that's.
You'll feel it there, let's put it that way. I think we start break the 21st.
Yeah.
That'd be correct, yes. Right now, it would appear to be open.
The 19th, is that too close for people to Christmas time?
We just have to check what we have this year and a corresponding date. This year on the 20th, we did not have anything that evening.
But several of us were going to be gone, that's why we didn't.
That is correct, yes.
So, but I don't anticipate to be gone.
So if that's, we could, that's a clean.
That's a clean night, exactly.
Correct. There'll be some sport events, but that's not uncommon.
And why don't we at least shoot for the 19th? And if something changes, we can do that. But let's plan on it being December 19th. Okay?
Thank you.
And we do that at 6, not 5:30, right?
Correct. That'd be a six o'clock start in that, yes.
So with that, I will take a motion. And if you want to add.
I want the board to approve the 2022-23 board meeting scheduled as presented.
Second.
And just, please specify the date, please.
No, I just made a note. I mean, we can specify all the other dates. There's no need to specify the December dates.
Okay, sounds great. Okay. Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Canwisher, that the board approve the 2022-2023 board meeting scheduled as presented or as amended. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Ms. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, next up is modified supplemental amount, amount funding for 2021, 2022 for statewide voluntary preschool program. Mr. Klinge Smith?
Okay, this is something new this year. And it's related to the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic. During the last Iowa legislative session, the Iowa General Assembly granted authority for the SBRC, which stands for School Budget Review Committee, to award funding to school districts that experience an increase in statewide voluntary preschool program enrollment during the current 2021-22 fiscal year, or school year, resulting from the decrease in the 2020-21 school year during which many parents kept their children home due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This was made possible by House File 868 Division 4. That's the piece of legislation that was passed during the last legislative session that made this possible. Here at Pleasant Valley School District, we have two of our elementary schools that have a preschool program. Bridgeview Elementary School and Hopewell Elementary School have a preschool program. In addition, we have two private providers that operate preschools here within the boundaries of our district. Kitty Carousel Academy Preschool in Leclerc and Our Savior Lutheran Preschool, not too far from here in Bettendorf, has a preschool program also. Now, the statewide voluntary preschool program, the funding for that just applies to four-year-old students who are participating in that preschool program. This year, when we did the certified enrollment, we had 35 students enrolled at Bridgeview Preschool Program, 29 students at Hopewell's Preschool Program. There were 12 students being served at Kitty Carousel in Leclerc and 109 students being served. And again, these are just four-year-olds. 109 four-year-olds at the, Our Savior Lutheran Preschool. So as part of this legislation, our school district is eligible to receive $25,294.50 of additional modified supplemental amount funding. So we get the spending authority, but then we also would get the cash to back up that spending authority if we approved this application to the School Budget Review Committee to apply for this. Now, one of the stipulations of this money is that it is required to be spent as part of the preschool program. You can't spend it on something different. And also, um, it has to be spending related somehow. The purpose of the spending has to be related to the pandemic. Um, we have to file a report, um, to the School Budget Review Committee indicating the purpose of the request, the dollar amount of the request, which of course, the dollar amount of the request would be the entire amount that we are eligible for, that $25,294.50. And then, um, the intended use of the funds related to the pandemic. So they do specify it has to be related to the pandemic, and then the date that the action was taken by the board to approve the request. And this money that the state is providing, they are receiving it as part of their ESER funds that they get from the federal government. So that's where they get the money from, and then they pass it through to the school districts. So, um, there is additional guidance that will be coming out on this, according to the email that we would receive, that we received. We'll be awaiting that additional guidance, um, as we solidify our plans for how we would spend the money. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Nope, I'm good.
Any questions regarding this?
How do you anticipate we'd have to spend the money? Like, how do you, where's our need for that? Like, yeah, sorry.
So what we'll be looking at is, we'll get the guidance from the DE and what, how it can be spent. And then we'll sit down with Cindy and all of our directors and see, okay, what does that look like? And how do we disperse it out, whether it's curriculum that we wanna pick up from a learning loss standpoint? Or it might be supplies, equipment, we'll have to wait and see what that looks like and how we can spend that.
So we don't have the guidance on how we can spend it yet?
Just have to be pinned on, but we'll wait, that is all we know right now. But there'll be additional guidance coming out.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, uh, I will take a motion.
As part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for funding related to FY '22 statewide voluntary preschool program, increased enrollment in the amount of $25,294.50, or the amount determined by the DE after review.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman. Uh, that as part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for funding related to fiscal year 2022 statewide voluntary preschool program, increased enrollment in the amount of $25,294.50, or the amount determined by the DE after review. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. And, uh, Mike, you are added again regarding the annual comprehensive financial report and, um, the annual review of that and why we're gonna submit it.
All right, yeah, thank you. So this would be the sixth year in a row that we would be applying to, um, ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials International, and to the Government Finance Officers, Officers Association, GFOA, to achieve, or to receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from ASBO. And then, GFOA calls it about the same thing, they just add a couple of words, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. Prior to six years ago, the school district did what's considered just a basic audit report. But six years ago, our financial auditors that we currently use, Bonsac and Fra Melt, they, they talked to us about how, um, it could be beneficial, potentially beneficial, to do what is called this, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which is a more detailed version of the audit report. It has, um, a lot more statistical inform, historical and statistical information in it. And, um, one of the potential benefits of doing an annual comprehensive financial report as opposed to a basic financial audit is, um, potentially when you're borrowing money, and of course, the school district has had to borrow money over the past, um, in the past 10 years or so, you potentially could get a lower interest rate on the money that you borrow by doing a more detailed, uh, annual comprehensive financial report as opposed to what we used to do, just the basic financial audit. In your board packet, and Beth has it up on the screen here, is just kind of a summary of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And I'm just gonna go through some of the things that are on here that you saw in the board packet related to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The first paragraph you can see there, why we have an annual audit. Uh, Chapter 6, Section, Chapter 11, Section 6 of the Code of Iowa does require every school district in the state to have an annual audit. Also, our federal funding is subject to an audit because of the requirements contained in Subpart F of Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations. This is the long title here. Part 200 Uniform Administrative Guidance, excuse me, Uniform Administrative Requirements. I'm not gonna read the rest of it, as you can see, it's very lengthy there. But that, that, that part has to do with, we expend over $750,000 during the fiscal year in federal awards. And that was especially the case this year because of the money that we've received through the federal government from the ESER funding related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that, that's the other reason that we are required to have an annual audit. As I said, this is the sixth year that we, in a row, that we will be, um, applying for those Certificates of Excellence in Financial Reporting we have received at the previous five years. An annual comprehensive financial report is a set of financial statements that provides a thorough and detailed presentation of a school district's financial condition and goes beyond the minimum information necessary for fair presentation in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, the annual comprehensive financial report has four categorized, categorized sections. There's an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, and a compliance section. As I mentioned earlier, number two, if you scroll down a little bit on this page, Beth, that you have on the screen there, why apply for this Certificate of Excellence? Well, here are the reasons. We received constructive feedback on our, um, Act for to help us improve the clarity and completeness of future ones. Earning the Certificate of Excellence honors our school district's transparency and full disclosure of our financial information. Um, as I mentioned earlier, that you see underlined there, receiving the Certificate of Excellence may help strengthen our district's presentation for bond issuance. So that gets to the possibly being able to get a lower interest rate when we borrow money. We also demonstrate to our community that the, the district is credible and committed to fiscal integrity. Also, um, Certificate of Excellence recipients do receive an award certificate. Right outside the boardroom, as you were walking in, there are the two plaques that, um, have our, um, awards out there that show, um, each year as you get a new one, you just add a little medal to it for each year that you are awarded the Certificate of Excellence. So those are right outside the boardroom there. Also, you get recognized in a couple different national professional publications. School Business Affairs, Accents Online, and School Business Daily are three publications by the Association of School Business Officials. And we get recognized, um, in those, um, publications for getting the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Some of the highlights of the actual, um, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, uh, there's a letter of transmittal towards the front of the report on pages Roman numeral three through Roman numeral 10. This is the letter from myself and Superintendent Struse to members of the board and to residents of the school district that presents the Act for to them. Uh, it contains information such as the basis of presentation, the internal controls structure discussion, a profile of the school districts, our financial policies, major initiatives and achievements, and the economic condition and outlook of the school district and the general Quad Cities community are part of that letter of transmittal. Then, uh, pages Roman numeral 13 and 14 in the Act for show our actual previous year's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting that we received from those two organizations. So those are on those pages in the report. Um, the most important, one of the most important things, the whole purpose, or main purpose of an audit is, um, the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. If you were to look at page two of our audit report, um, the cat, or the Act for, uh, the first paragraph of it shows the auditor's opinion. We received an unmodified, unmodified opinion that was issued on our financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the most desired result of an audit. An unmodified opinion means that the auditors are saying that it is their opinion that the district's financial statements have been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So we did receive the ultimate goal of an audit to an unmodified opinion. Uh, the next, uh, pages of the audit report, page four, pages four through page 16, it's what's, is what's called management, management's discussion and analysis, also referred to as MDNA. MDNA, well, GASB, G-A-S-B, um, Statement Number 34. GASB stands for governmental accounting standards board. This section is a narrative summarization of the district's financial statements and financial condition for the year. It takes the audited financial statements and puts the information in a narrative form. This is an important section of the audit report, as it will help answer questions if the reader reviews the financial statement section of the audit report. Uh, most of the narrative portions of the MDNA have been prepared by me as the MDNA is management's responsibility and not the auditor's responsibility. The auditors do give us kind of a, a template, uh, to use when we're writing the MDNA, but the actual contents of it are management's responsibility. Uh, the next section of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report on pages 17 through 20 is what's called the District-wide Financial Statements. This section looks at the entire district's finances broken into two types of activities, the governmental activities and the business-type activities. The district's only business-type activity is our food service program. Uh, that is the, as I said, the only business-type activity. All of our other funds in the school district would fall under the category of a governmental activity. Uh, these statements use what is called the Full Accrual Method of Accounting, in which fixed assets, depreciation, and long-term assets and liabilities are recognized on the books. Uh, the district's net position, formerly known as net assets for the, for the fiscal year, and this is for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2021, our net assets increased by $5,524,210 during the fiscal year, or 9.9%. So our net assets in the district as of June 30th, 2021 were $61,175,670. Then the next, uh, section of the report, pages 21 through 29, is what's called the Fund Financial Statements. This section looks at the governmental major funds individually and combines non-major funds into one column. The major funds for the district during the 2020-21 fiscal year were our general fund and our capital projects fund. Our capital projects fund includes the district's physical plant and equipment levy fund. That's what we refer to as PEPAL. And then also our statewide sales services and use tax fund. That is the fund that the one cent statewide penny sales tax money goes into that fund. So those two funds make up the, um, the district's capital projects fund. On the fund financial statements, only shorter-term assets and liabilities are recognized in those financial statements, with the exception of the school nutrition fund, which does recognize fixed assets and depreciation, since it is, um, what's called a proprietary fund, or most like a business out there in the world. Uh, the total governmental funds balance as of June 30th, 2021 for the school district was $27,153,437, which was a decrease during the fiscal year of $4,704,712, or 14.8%. The main reason for that decrease during the fiscal year in, um, the governmental funds balance was we have been using our money that we previously borrowed, uh, to pay off the construction on Forest Grove Elementary School, which of course, just opened up this fiscal year. So as we pay off those funds that we borrowed, that does decrease our overall fund balance in the governmental funds. So that's the reason for the decrease there. Uh, the general fund, unassigned fund balance, however, during the fiscal year increased by $2,611,342, a 60.6% increase in our unassigned fund balance and just our general fund during the year. And a lot of that had to do with, um, the money that we did receive during the fiscal year from the government for the COVID-related, um, pandemic funds. It was part of the reason for the increase in our, uh, fund balance in the general fund. Our capital projects fund balance decreased by $7,695,192, or 38% during the fiscal year. Again, the reason for that is what I mentioned earlier, paying off Forest Grove Elementary School. The construction on that is why the capital projects fund decreased during the year. Our school nutrition fund net position increased during the year by $362,859, or 23%. So despite not charging students for most of the fiscal year for a basic lunch, our fund balance, or our net position in the nutrition fund, still increased during the year by $362,859. And that's because the federal government offset the money that we were not receiving from students, charging students for the basic lunch during the fiscal year. Our internal service fund, that's where we account for the district's, uh, self-funded health insurance and dental insurance programs, or plans. Uh, that increased, the net position in that increased by $166,918 during the fiscal year. And one thing I was gonna point out that's not on these pages here, um, I think it was mentioned earlier in the board meeting, what our overall budget is in the school district. For the 2021 fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, our general fund expenditures were $55,962, excuse me, $55,962,993. When I started with the school district, um, 21 years ago, our general fund budget was just over $21 million. So that shows you, in the last 20 years, our general fund budget has well more than doubled over what it was when I first started here, as now it's at $55,962,993. Our overall expenditures, if you take into account all of the other funds in the school district, our capital projects funds, our nutrition fund, and all of those various funds, our expenditures during the last fiscal year were $74,563,134. So nearly $75 million, um, dollars expended from the school district during the 2020-21 fiscal year. Number nine on here that Beth has up here, then the next section of the audit report is the notes to the financial statement. This section has various notes summarizing the significant accounting policies in the school district. It gives more details on our capital assets, and assets in the school district and our long-term liabilities. Uh, pages 56 through 64 of the report are what's called Required Supplementary Information. Uh, some of the information in this section, it shows an actual versus budget comparison. There's a section in this one that talks about our liability, the district's liability, and how much we contribute to IPRs, the Iowa Public Employee Retirement System, during the year. The next section is what's called Other Supplementary Information, pages 65 through 70. That shows a more detailed breakdown of our non-major funds in the school district. And then, pages 71 through 107 are what's called the Statistical Section. This is the section that contains numerous detailed reports, many of which do have data for the last 10 years for the school district. So, that's a good one for comparing how things have changed in the last 10 years in the district financially. Then, the last section of the report, pages 108 through 118, is what's called the Compliance Section. It's important to note that this year, there were no instances of non-compliance or material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the, that the auditors noted in our internal control structure over financial reporting. Also, there were no instances of non-compliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies in the internal control structure over federal awards that the auditors found this year. So, it was actually one of our cleanest reports that we've had this year. They found absolutely nothing as far as deficiencies or material weaknesses in our control structure this year. So, very pleased that that was the case. There were also no findings in the section that's called Schedule of Findings and Question Cost for the fiscal year. So, again, a very clean audit report. I would like to thank our business office that works with me. Lori Wakelin is the district staff accountant. She does a very large portion, or helps out on a very large portion of getting the auditors what they need to do this report. Lisa Paper, our bookkeeper slash accounts payable person's heavily involved in it. Kelly Hatler, our payroll person in the district, also works with the auditors quite a bit. Andrea Mailer, who just retired, or I guess resigned from food service, and she's been replaced by Corey Campbell. Corey will now be the person with our nutrition fund who will work with the auditors on the audit. So, again, big thanks to those people. Debbie, I think you help out some with the auditors, a little bit. Anyway, big thanks to all those people. None of this could be done and we couldn't get these awards if it wasn't for the hard work of everybody in the business office. So, that's all I had on it. I'll take any questions if anybody had any questions related to it otherwise. There is a fee for applying for, I forgot to mention that. There is a fee for applying for the Certificates of Excellence. It's $1,110 to apply for the one from ASBO and a $1,220 fee to apply for the one with the Government Finance Officers Association. But we feel that those fees are well worth it to be able to get the recognition for these awards.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
Mike, I read a lot of audit reports at work. And congratulations to you and those who assisted for boring me to tears with nothing interesting in them. Thank you for that.
This stuff is boring to most people. Molly, you probably find some interest in it since you're an accountant.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's very commendable because it's very hard to get a clean audit report because those auditors are really going to be looking for something because they'll want to find something. And to them not be able to find anything is really a testament to your work and your staff's work. Because I know how tedious it can be to put together all of these numbers and go for those, you know, the accreditations that you're going for are so tedious. So, thank you for doing that year after year. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
I can just attest to the attention to detail because I didn't have a $6.90 receipt from Parkland to Washington Mall. And Lisa Paper hunted me down, gave me an invoice, and I said, "That's fine. Here's a $6.90." So, that's worth every bit of the report.
Yes, of course.
Even Mr. Zimmer has to follow their orders.
All right. Well, then, I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2021 as issued by Bonsac, Bonsac and FraMelt LLP.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson, that the board accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2021 as issued by Bonsac and FraMelt LLP. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ears?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Camerier?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. And if we didn't have, if we didn't even have enough for Mr. Plainsmith to keep him busy, there is one last item here, and that is for you, and that is the December monthly financial reports.
Well, this one will be much shorter unless you have any questions. We are already halfway through another fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th each year. So, as of December 31st, you have the financial report in the board packet. And as I looked through it, I did not see anything that stood out as unexpected or unusual. Again, we continue in the nutrition funds to not charge students for the basic lunch. But like last year, that is being made up by money that we receive from the federal government. So, our nutrition fund is still in good financial shape thanks to the reimbursement from the federal government there. Otherwise, like I say, I didn't see anything that looked unusual. So, unless anybody has any questions, I'll just take a motion on the December monthly financial reports.
Anybody have any questions? I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Conkle, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ears?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Camerier?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes.